We'll call to meeting the Order of the Planning Commission of the Town of Los Gatos for August 14th, 2013. We have a roll call. Commissioner Seauk?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner Bujhwa?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
And Chair Erickson? Here. Would you please? And Ms. Smith has an excused absence. Thank you, thank you. Would you please stand and join Commissioner Birch, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos and the Planning Commission strongly encourages active participation on the part of the public in the deliberations of the Planning Commission when it's conducting its business on behalf of the citizens of the town and representing the Town Council. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Commission. We always appreciate written comments before the meeting that are delivered to the staff that can then be incorporated in the packets that are distributed prior to the meeting to the Commission. At the meetings of the Planning Commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. The first is during the public portion of the public hearings of agendized items and also during the portion of the agenda which is referred to as verbal communications when members of the public may address the Commission on any topic that is not on the agenda of a particular meeting. If you would like to address, if members of the public who are present would like to address the Commission in either of those parts of the meeting tonight, we'd ask that you complete a speaker card like this if you have not already done that. They're in the back of the benches in the chamber and pass it to the staff so we can be sure that we call you at the appropriate time. And that would also include people who are applicants for a particular agenda item. We have no written communications or desk items, is that correct, for this evening? Members of the Planning Commission, we also have no requested continuances for this evening's meeting. Members of the Commission are also members of other committees of the town, in addition deserving on the Planning Commission. There was a meeting last Thursday of the North Forty Specific Plan Advisory Committee, and Commissioner Seauk is going to give us a report on that meeting.
Okay. As you mentioned, the North Forty Committee did meet last Wednesday. What we've been doing is we have been reviewing the draft specific plan that will speak to what kind of development and its use on that particular property. So we reviewed the design guidelines, both commercial and residential, had a lengthy discussion about neighborhood identity, and we also had a discussion on circulation and streetcape, excuse me, streetscape of the property. Our next meeting will be on the 29th, and at that time, we are going to finalize the plan, discuss infrastructure, public facilities, as well as looking at revisiting the numbers for residential units on the property and the commercial square footage.
Any questions for Commissioner Seauk? There was a meeting of the Conceptual Development Advisory Committee this afternoon, and Commissioner Talisfor is going to give us a report on that.
Thank you very much. So that's the conceptual development advise-- oh, did you say that? CDAC, I'm sorry. The first item we heard was at 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard. It was requesting a review of development plans for construction of a 12-unit residential planned development. And that is a very complicated, I think it was the general feeling of all committee members that it was a complicat-- it is a complicated intersection at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Shannon Road. And in general, the committee believed that the proposed 12-unit residential proposal is too dense and that the area in that particular property is better served as residential-commercial serving due to the fact that to burden that area anymore is, would, you know, be a definite problem. The one thing that came out of it, though, was that the architecture was quite different in that it was a kind of a row, a row environment that might be appropriate, not there, but at another place in town. So that was what came out of that. And then we also heard 233 Oak Meadow Drive, and that was requesting a review of plans for a plan development amendment for demolition of an existing office building and construction of six residential condominiums. The majority of the committee felt that the development condominiums from office to, I mean, the development of condominiums from office is problematic due to the location, circulation problems, the environmental impact because it's close right to the creek, and that losing office space for housing in that area might not be what we want to do because we need to have those smaller offices to attract incoming businesses. And that was our meeting.
Any questions for Commissioner Talisfor? There was also a general plan meeting earlier today, and Commissioner Bujhwa is going to go through a report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. So the General Plan Committee met. We've been working for quite some time on the affordable housing overlay zone issue. We had sent something to Town Council a while back, and it came back to us. So we've been working on revisions under the direction of the Town Council. And today, we got to see a draft of our revisions that staff had taken our comments and our discussions over the past few meetings and actually put them down on paper. We got to see what those revisions look like, and we went through them, and staff did a great job because we had very few comments. We're going to see one clarification we wanted back and one revision, and that will be it. So that's going to happen at the next meeting, which is August 28th, and that will probably be that committee's final input on the affordable housing overlay zone, and it'll be coming to General Planning Commission next.
Thank you, Commissioner Bujhwa. Any questions for him? If not, we also had minutes for the July 10th meeting of the Planning Commission, distributed. Are there comments on those minutes from members of the committee? If not, the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt a minute as distributed. Commissioner Talisfor?
I won't make the motion because I wasn't here, but I did want the commission to know that I did review the minutes and am ready to make a vote.
Commissioner Bujhwa?
I'll move approval of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, July 10th, and accepting them as submitted.
Second. Second by Commissioner O'Donnell, so we have a motion by Commissioner Bujhwa and a second by Commissioner O'Donnell to adopt the minutes as distributed. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. We are now at the point in the agenda where verbal communication, where the public can address the Commission on any item that is not on the agenda. We don't have any speaker cards for anyone who would like to address us on the fate of the San Francisco Giants or any other item that isn't on the agenda, so we'll move on. We have no items on a consent calendar this evening. There are no continued public hearings, so we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13-052, which is requesting approval to eliminate an interior second dwelling unit in an existing single-family residence at 34 and 36 Ashler Avenue on property zoned R1D. May I show, may I have a show of hands from the commissioners who visited the property? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures from a commissioner on this item? Not Ms. Savage, may we have a brief staff report?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. The property currently has a two-story structure with two levels, one in, there's one unit in each level, and the property owner is requesting to remove the permit for a secondary dwelling unit to modify that structure to be a single-family dwelling. The second unit was legalized in 1986. There would be minor modifications to the exterior of the building if the project were to be approved. The housing element, the project would be compatible with the housing element in that the elimination of this second unit actually is totaled to be less than the amount of secondary dwelling units that the town has approved over the course of several years. In addition, the existing property owner has no intent on using the second unit as a second unit, and so it would not affect the housing stock. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Are there questions for the staff at this time? Commissioner Seauk?
Thank you. Just wanted to ask if the second housing unit, I understand it's not being used, but in any way, does it count towards our affordable housing numbers?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions for the staff at this point in time? If not, we will now open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the question for up to three minutes, and I believe that is Mark Ronaldson. So we'd ask that you identify yourself with your address for the record, and you have--
So my name's Mark Ronaldson.
Up to five minutes to address the question.
Great, thank you. My name's Mark Ronaldson. I live at 34 Ashler Avenue. Thank you so much for the time to review the property tonight. I look forward to the discussion. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask. We, my family and I, a family of five, moved to town about a year ago, absolutely love Los Gatos. We were lucky enough to find this property at 34 Ashler. The home does need some work. It doesn't work as is for our family of five. So I think by working with our contractor and friend, Eric Wade, we have a great opportunity to design a house that's much safer for our family, much more usable for the family of five, and I think overall, better for the property, better for the neighborhood as well. So I take on any questions, but we are very interested in working this property and this project and hope that you would pass it.
Thank you, Mr. Ronaldson. Are there questions for the applicant at this point in time?
Okay, thank you.
That's it, thank you very much. We would now invite comments from any members of the public. We don't have any speaker cards who would like to comment on the application. If not, we will close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the Commission for the questions of staff, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Seauk?
If there are no comments, I'll go ahead and make, craft a motion.
Be terrific.
Okay. Based on the summary report, as well as what was said today, I would like to make a motion for approval on application, architecture inside application S-13-052. I can make the proposed, the findings that this project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Those specifics are in Exhibit 2. I can also make the required findings in Section 29.10.330 of the Town Code for elimination of a second dwelling unit. The only thing that I would like to add to Exhibit 2 is that it does not afford, excuse me, it does not impact in any way our numbers for affordability, since that's been an issue that's been important to the town. I can also make the required findings as required by Section 29.10.09030 for elimination of an existing second unit and make the required considerations in 29.20.150 of the Town Code for granting approval of an architecture and site application. And with this motion, I would like to attach the conditions contained in Exhibit 3.
Thank you, Commissioner Seauk. Commissioner Talisfor?
And I certainly would second that motion. I think this is the right thing to do in, under these circumstances, to get a house back.
We have a motion by Commissioner Seauk and a second by Commissioner Talisfor to adopt, to approve the architectural site application with the appropriate findings. Are there any comments from members of the Commission on the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can file an appeal to the Town Council. The forms are available in the Town Clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13-019, requesting approval to construct a new second story for a single-family residence at 277 Herschner Court on property zoned R18. May I have a show of hands from members of the Commission who visited the property? Everyone has. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner for this item? Mr. Paulson, may we have a brief staff report?
Extremely brief. Staff doesn't have anything to add, other than what's in the staff report, and we're available to answer any questions.
Are there questions of the staff before we move to the public hearing, public portion of the public hearing? So we'll now open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant, Mr. Jeff Guinta, who is the applicant, who represents the applicant, to address the Commission We would ask you both, when you start, to introduce yourselves, just for the record.
I'll go ahead and do that. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jeff Guinta. I'm the project applicant. I'm at 2801 Moore Park Avenue, San Jose, California, 95128. We have a presentation to do, so I'll go a little bit slow, but... So our proposal is to, or our request, is to allow a second floor addition to an existing single-family residence. That would exceed the maximum allowable floor area. The proposal is for a 637-square-foot second-story addition in conjunction with a 65-square-foot first-floor expansion, as well as expanding a non-conforming garage by 37 square feet to make it conform to the town standards. Our proposed floor area ratio would be 37.8 percent. So our next slide.
Should I introduce myself?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Sayadan. I am the owner, and I'm helping my son, Stephen Sayadan, who will be moving to the property with his family of four, total of five. So I'm here to help Jeff and to facilitate the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, so this first slide shows the site plan and front elevation as we have proposed it. This is what we would consider our third, fourth submittal on this project. What you see is the site plan with the addition, square footage, as I had mentioned before, and the front elevation. Please note that the windows on the first floor have been changed to be more consistent with the town residential design guidelines. Our next slide will show the existing single-story home. This is a currently three-bedroom, two-bathroom home. Includes a dining room, entry area, family room, kitchen, and you'll note that the garage is 18 by 20, where 20 by 20 is required. Our next slide will show the exterior elevations as they exist. Note the front windows on the left of the north elevation, and the entry are currently arched. Those have been in our proposed design, and we've changed those to become more consistent with the residential design guidelines. This is our proposed floor plan. The changes on the first floor would be to extend the dining room to the front. This is the 65-square-foot addition. That would accommodate a staircase to the second floor. You will see that the entry remains, the front porch remains, and so there's no changes to that, other than to eliminate the arched entry and go to a simpler, more flat entry style. The garage has been expanded to the right, and we'll now have 20 by 20 minimum as our clear space. On the right, you see the second floor. It consists of a master bedroom, a secondary bedroom, and a master bathroom that can be shared by the secondary bedroom as well. So this slide will show the front elevation again, as well as the west right-side elevation, the rear elevation, and the east left-side elevation. Note that the windows on the second floor of the south elevation have been changed to accommodate some of the design concerns by the neighbor immediately to our rear. This is a streetscape of Herschner Court. The upper streetscape is the south side of Herschner Court. You see our property there, second from the left. There is a two-story. At the very right end of that streetscape, I do want to mention, and I'll follow up with that again, that in the staff report on page four, that particular address was not included in the, in the staff report for neighborhood comparison, for floor area and house size and so forth. Then on the streetscape north side of Herschner Court, we'll have two two-story homes. The one that's second from the right is directly across the street from our subject property, and then to the right. Here's our block plan. Please note that the second story at the top, 287 Herschner Court, is actually the largest house on the street. By county records, it is 2,944 square feet. The home 297 Herschner Court has the greatest floor area on the street.
So we, you used up your allotted five minutes, so we would then allow the members of the Commission to ask you questions if they have any.
Okay, certainly.
At this point in time. Commissioner Seauk?
Could you actually go to the slide prior to this? You had mentioned that 253, which is not on our chart?
Uh, two--
If you could go to the cul-de-sac where you have all the addresses.
Two, two, this one?
Yes, so you said--
87 on Herschner Court is not included in the neighborhood comparisons.
Um, oh, I see, okay.
At the top, it's the shaded one at the top.
Okay. And then you said directly across from you, 295.
295, all right, is a two-story home.
Okay.
To the right of that, 297 is the largest, the greatest floor area on the street, so although we're not the largest house, we are not the largest house and we're not the largest floor area. And that was omitted from the staff report. The staff report says that we are the large, our proposal would be the largest house on the street in terms of square footage.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions for the applicant at this point in time? Commissioner Bujhwa?
I gathered from your next slide that you were going to talk about your engagement with the neighbors, and I would like to hear what outreach you've done. It looked like you had signatures on certain parcels.
Yes.
If you could explain that, but also tell me about your conversations that you've had with your neighbors.
Okay. So what you see here is what was, this was part of our plan set that was, was brought by Sarah to all the neighbors on May 14th. The plans that they reviewed were our second submittal plans. These were the ones that we had amended after the consulting architect Larry Cannon had done his review. I'll let Sarah, Sarah did go to the neighbors, so I'll let her--
And so the signatures are, just indicate who was present at the meeting? They don't indicate support or opposition in any way, just who was present?
Correct. When I went to each door, I showed them the plans based upon the revision done by the town architect, that we included that. That was our second submittal, and I asked them if I have their blessing, and they looked at it. I answered questions, and I said, "If I have your blessing, would it be okay if you sign?" And they signed, but the only neighbors who were concerned were the neighbor-- the only neighbors who were concerned were the neighbor immediately behind our backyard, 267, and then one neighbor on House Court, I was not able to reach him, and then I found that he's in China on vacation. And then the neighbor who's now immediately to our right, they had just purchased the house, and I didn't have any address for them. Therefore, I waited until later on to approach them. So that's why there's no signature there. But then after this, the neighbor on 267, because of the concern about her privacy, she talked with the other neighbors, and then we lost some of the support. And I'm going to show you the next slide with the people who still support us. And I asked them if they would be willing to come to the meeting tonight, and they said, "By the very fact that we signed and we are not here, we're saying we're supporting you." So they wouldn't be able to come, but their signature is here. Those would be the neighbors on Herschner Court where our resident is, Stephen's resident is, who are still supporting. One neighbor, the two-story neighbor, he said that he is neutral, and he wrote it down, he's neutral. So I have his handwriting. And then the neighbor who moved in, who just recently purchased the house, Jeanette and Chris, they said they are undecided, and I don't know if they are here. Jeanette is here, so I'm sure she will be speaking.
Could you speak about the nature of the concern that you've heard from the neighbors that do have concern about this?
Yes, sir.
Was it privacy? Was it lack of views? Was it shade? I mean, what exactly was the concern?
The concern that I heard was privacy, that they are concerned about privacy. So we dealt with privacy by changing the window sizes. I actually asked our landscape person to put in redwood trees. We have cypresses that are tall, but there is one gap where the bedrooms on the second floor could view the bedrooms in our neighbor's house. So I put two redwoods there because the arborist said those are the ones that really grow faster, so will create privacy. I also suggested to the neighbors that, they were concerned that, well, what if you remove the trees later on, because it is on your backyard? And I said, "I am willing to actually put trees on their backyard at my cost, at their choosing of the type of tree that they like." We do respect their concerns.
If I may follow up again. Did you make any revisions? So when you knocked on doors, you were on revision number two.
Correct.
And now we're on revision number four.
Right.
So have you made, have there been any design changes between two and four to address the privacy issue?
Yes.
You alluded, the designer alluded to it earlier. Could you tell us what those were?
Absolutely. Jeff knows, you know, we elevated the windows, we smallened the size of the house in general. So right now, we have only two bedrooms upstairs, the baby room and a master with a kind of jack and jill in between. But Jeff can also address your question, Commissioner.
Yeah, so what we did after that second submittal, we went in with a third submittal that was substantially different. We eliminated a bathroom. We eliminated the secondary bedroom. We moved the bathroom to the front, eliminated those windows, eliminated side windows, and reduced the square footage to where we would only be requesting a little over 100, I think 137 square feet, something like that, of additional floor area. So that went to the town's consulting architect and did not go over very well. Too small, just didn't look right. So we then made a fourth submittal where we kept the floor area reduced from our second submittal. We brought one of the bedrooms back, eliminated one of the bathrooms, kept the windows at the rear tall, and to, we originally had an eight-by-four window on the back of the house. We changed that to an eight-by-two window to elevate the sill height to roughly 60 inches above the floor. And so at some point in the process, about then, and Sarah can explain to you better, she went back or tried to go back to the neighbors, and we met with our planner, Erin Walters, and we were requested not to contact the neighbors anymore. The neighbors did not want to speak to us. There was communication between Sarah and one of the neighbors, actually two of the neighbors, and they said, "Now our communication will go through the town planner." So that's where we left it, until Sarah went back to some of the neighbors yesterday to see if we could still get their support. So as far as the, the third and fourth revisions, we did not present those to any of the neighbors at all.
Other questions for the applicants at this time? Thank you very much. We'll open it to other members of the public, and then after we finish that, you would have three more minutes to respond at that point in time. So we would invite members of the public to address the commission who are interested in this particular item. We have one speaker card, Mark Brodsky. If there are other people who would like to speak, we'd ask that you would fill out a speaker card and present to the staff, so we can call you at the appropriate time.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Mark Brodsky, 17306 Grosvenor Court, Monteserino, California. As some of you may know, I'm the former mayor of our neighboring city, and I've worked long and hard with planning commissions, and I understand what a difficult job it is and how much time it takes. I wish we had applicants who went through as much effort as this. This would be a joy. Four revisions, talking with all the neighbors, going back to all the neighbors, making the modifications. They even cut back, from what I understand, even too much, and they had to go back and make it even better looking. Because what the plans and the FARs show, they're guidelines, and here we are with somebody who's not the largest, not the biggest, not the most detailed, but they're guidelines, and they don't tell value and they don't tell quality. So what we, the issues that transcend the raw numbers here, even when you add on the extra numbers that they've shown, that this is just in keeping with the quality and nature of the community, is that here is a member of our community trying to make a better community for us. We're bringing some more family in for something for the future. There is one important issue, I see, besides the floor area ratio, and because that's in the middle, besides the size of the structure, that's in the middle, the issues of privacy on any second story. And I know that from personal experience in Monteserino. Someone wanted to build a house and look into my bedroom, and we did the exact same thing that she proposed. We went to the applicant and said, "Look, we will build a tree on your property. We will make it so it's yours. You pick the tree you want, you make it the one." The view is away from these people's property. It's the other direction. One day, the people across the fence, the families will grow, they'll want a second story, as did many of the people who have growing families and long-term commitment to this community. When that happens, they too will be facing the other way. So this is really one of the easiest decisions. I know it's tough to make calls. It's horrible. You have winners and losers, but this really is a win-win solution. So I'm in favor. Hope you make the changes recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Are there questions of him? Thank you very much. We would call Wendy Mariani.
Could Maureen go first?
That's fine. Let's call Maureen Heberling then.
My name is Maureen Heberling. Better. Maureen Heberling. I live at 291 Herschner Court, and I've lived there since 1969, so I've seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood. These are all LEAP homes that were constructed around 1964. Six of these LEAP homes are in, on Herschner Court. The other three homes were constructed in the mid-'90s, and at the time, they were constructed with the guidelines given to them, so they are two-story homes. The floor plans on the LEAP homes consist of the master bedroom extending out from the home, facing the backyard. The living room also faces the backyard, as well as a family kitchen. There are sliding glass doors in the master bedroom and off the family kitchen. These are about six feet wide. And there is a 12-foot-wide sliding door off the living room. Again, all these three rooms face the backyard. I happen to live at 291, as I said, and there are 12 or 15 townhouses behind me. Of those 15, six of, yes, six of them can easily look down into my backyard. Of those six, three have a bird's-eye view into my home. I am concerned for my neighbors on House Court, that they will have the same issues as I have, and have to keep their curtains closed for their own privacy if this two-story is added on, in addition to losing privacy in their backyards. The other thing is, in a two-story or a second-story property, sound tends to travel faster, louder. And behind me, there are two bathrooms that face my house. And if someone's having an uncomfortable day, it does make an uncomfortable sound. I originally signed Sarah's permit because I thought the architecture was very attractive, and it would, this property would not directly affect me. However, after talking with my neighbors, I changed my mind, and now I find out that she is several hundred square feet or over what the town limits. And if you're going to allow her to have these extra square feet, then I think everybody should be able to have them in the town of Los Cadas. I am against this addition totally. And I hope you will listen to what staff report is, which is a no, and listen to the neighbors.
Thank you. Are there questions for the speaker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Wendy Mariani.
I have a, we have a presentation to show you the view. Jump drive. Is it okay if we use someone's computer?
Sure.
Okay.
We would ask, just for the record, to introduce yourself with your address.
My name is Wendy Mariani. I live at 273 House Court. I too originally signed the document, but actually didn't have an opportunity to look at it. And when I, when Sarah came to visit, it was really at a rush time. So I applaud her efforts, but I never got an opportunity to really see the plans. And when I, when I was able to have the plans emailed me and looked, look at the plans, that's when I noticed that I would lose all privacy in my backyard, and that these windows would look directly into my bedroom and into, directly into my backyard and directly into my bedroom. My concern is privacy for both myself and my neighbors and my young children that grow, that have not yet left the house. They're four, not seven and nine. My concern is if the second-story addition is built, that we will lose privacy, and there are very few guarantees, there are very few things that can be done from an architectural standpoint other than putting all the windows on the front of the house that would allow privacy for the neighbors. Sure. Okay, so this is a view from my backyard, and currently you can see that the second story, clearly almost the entire second story is seen from my backyard, right outside my bedroom window. These, this depicts where all the windows are going to go. Obviously, the picture to the left is going to be looking directly into my neighbor's backyard, and then the two windows on the right are looking directly into my yard. So it's very undesirable. I fear that if the second-story addition was built the way that it has been architected, that I would lose privacy. I understand there have been talks about frosted glass and trees and so forth, but trees can get cut down. When second stories are built, frosted glass can be changed. If a second story is built, you know, you don't have to get a permit, although probably you should, but it's, my understanding, you don't need to get a permit to change the size of a window. A general contractor can come and do it. So my concern truly is privacy. And if there was a way that we could compromise and keep the privacy in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard, I'm very open to seeing those plans. I do know that there are neighbors farther down on House Court that actually, when they built their second story roughly 10, 11 years ago, they have all of the main egress windows on the front. So they, they have addressed all the issues with their neighbors. Is there another thing that we want to talk about? Oh, I did want to mention that the suggestion of putting trees in our backyard only occurred last night at 8:30. So I really even haven't had an opportunity to talk with my husband to see whether or not that would be something that would be acceptable. I think that's it, right? Our largest concern is privacy. Other questions?
Thank you very much. Other questions? Mr. Boudreaux.
So apart from trees, do you have any suggestions of how they could mitigate your privacy concerns? I mean, you said you'd be open to seeing designs.
I have a lot, I have a lot of faith in architects, and I would really hope that an architect would be able to design a second story that would accommodate the town's limit in terms of size, and putting the egress windows on the front of the house.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this time? If not, thank you very much. We would call Premol Savla.
Good evening, guys. My name is Premol Savla. I live at 267 Harvey Scott. I've been living in this neighborhood for about 15 years now. We moved into this house two, two years ago, and prior to that, we lived on Kensington Way, which is just around the corner from this particular property. All, most of the properties in this neighborhood are one-stories, and if you look at it, we are directly behind this property. So we are on the property with the pool, which is sitting right on the south of the property. When we first looked at the plans, the biggest concern for us was privacy. At the same time, when we, when Sarah first approached us and presented the plan to us, there was a story in New York Times regarding people taking photographs into their house, and there was a big exhibition about it out there. I have two young daughters, and privacy and security is a big concern for us. Sarah has presented quite a few plans to the city. All I have seen is that the size of the window has changed. It has gone from 80 by 40 to 80 by 20, but it hasn't changed or moved from the location that it was there. We talked to the neighbors about our concerns. There's a, there's a house on our street which has built a second story, and they addressed the concerns of their neighbors by building the egress windows to the front of the house. So they removed all the windows in the back of their house. So it has been done, and it can be done, by addressing the concerns of the neighbors. So if you can go ahead. Yeah, yeah, one more. So this is the view from my backyard. As Maureen talked about it, all these are LEAP homes. We have large windows in our backyard. We have slider doors which lead us into the backyard. And this is the view directly coming out of my living room and seeing what is there. It gives full visibility into our bedrooms and into our living room. What it does mean is that whatever we are up to, they can look into it any time of the day or night. So we are very concerned about the location of these windows, and it does not address our security and privacy concerns in any way or form. So I urge you guys to consider the you guys to consider the application and ask them to review it again and see what additional possible, possibilities are there.
Thank you, Mr. Savla. Are there questions for the speaker? Commissioner Buzraw.
What are your thoughts on the proposal for additional vegetation, either on their property or your property?
My thoughts are, I, Sarah is a really nice lady. I have no complaints against her, right? But tomorrow, if she decides to sell the house, what guarantees that the next person who comes in will not take those trees down?
Other questions for the speaker? Commissioner Sayak.
What about the proposal to plant trees on your side of the fence?
We just finished doing our yard. I heard about it when Wendy just mentioned it today, and it hasn't given us any time to even think about it. Again, how big a tree do you want to plant in the backyard? You can see my entire backyard, so there has to be a tree planted everywhere as we go along, right? There are really great cedar trees that are there in her backyard today, so they, they don't give full sight into the rest of the yard, but if you see where the location of the window is, it has direct access into our bedrooms and our living room and our family rooms. So how many trees would you plant on both sides just to make sure that whoever's coming next will not be able to see into our backyards? Yes, the streets have a lot of rats.
Other questions at this time? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would next call Jeanette Barrios, is that correct?
Yeah.
My name is Jeanette Barrios. My husband is Chris Heckler. We have two young children, one, one-month-old here. Were the neighbors directly adjacent that Sarah had mentioned? We actually closed the house in April, moved in in June, so we're very new to the neighborhood. We actually weren't aware of the construction plans when we purchased the home. And to be honest, we may not have purchased the home had that second story been there or had we been aware of that, because having the two young children in the home, their home full-time, and we have a nanny as well, so just the disruption of the building would have probably been a deterrent for us. And at this point, I know that, you know, something like a construction, construction isn't necessarily a reason to not approve a plan, but at this point, it really is privacy as well for us. If, I know that there's sort of a mock-up now, but our, as I said, our, our whole living space, actually, the way the floor plans are in our home, really does face the back. It's not like the home I grew up in, the kitchen window faces the front court. So our kitchen window today, with the second story, actually, we lose sunlight, we lose our entire kind of kitchen window there. And then the living area, or the kitchen, actually, you know, where with kids, you spend like 80% of your time in your kitchen, is right there again where the, the second story is. So it's just a little, it's a little bit invasive just in terms of that second story. So we agree that it's a, again, primarily a privacy concern for us, and like I said, ideally, not having a construction project with two young children in the home would be, would be a concern, but I know that's not always a decision point, so we agree on the privacy question.
Thank you very much. Are there quick, Commissioner Talasfor?
Just a location, just so I understood, you're, you're the house on the corner?
No, we're actually adjacent on the other side, so 281, I don't see the, the, so if you're facing the house, we're to the exact, right?
To the right, if I, you're to the right.
Right, and we're just one story. And there, our house has not had any major modifications that I'm aware of. It had a recent upgrade in the kitchen and stuff, but it's not, it's the original floor plan.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Barrios? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would call John Jaeger.
Hello. I've lived in the neighborhood for a year. It's a wonderful neighborhood to live in.
We'd ask you, Mr. Jaeger, to, to introduce yourself and your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is John Jaeger. I live two doors down at 285 Hirschner. It's the property one down from the previous speaker. So the major reason I'm here is I'm out of support for the neighbors. I'm also concerned about the cascading effect of two-story properties being built. Once, you know, she builds a two-story property, maybe the neighbors next door are unhappy, and then they move out, and then the new person comes in and wants to build a two-story property. Right now, I have a sliding glass door right next to the neighbor that has beautiful morning sun, and, you know, they build a, a two-story property next to me, and then I won't have that anymore. The other thing, it's been mentioned about you can plant a tree on the property behind. Well, he has a pool. If he puts a tree in the pool, right, right above the pool, he's going to have debris in his pool all the time. I don't think the neighbor of mine planned for that when he built, you know, when he had a pool, and he asked if he had a tree there now. So another thing is, there's been, there was one on Truth on the slide previous that the owner presented. She indicated that we had approved, but we actually had not. My wife was home alone at the time she came around, and she said she just needed our names, was not asking for approval. My wife was distracted by our two toddlers, and we did not approve. So that statement, it was incorrect. The other thing is, there's been a statement that no one's view is affected. The state, the neighbor, Droyer, who is across the street, she has actually personally complained to me about the fact that she would, how unhappy she is that she would lose her view when the second story was built. So she's not here today, though. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Are there questions for Mr. Jaeger? If not, thank you very much. We would now give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission with any additional input for up to three minutes.
Okay, so it certainly appears that privacy tends to be an issue. We'll have some pictures that show the view from the various homes. I'm not sure which one will be which, I'm sort of speak to everyone at the same time. But I think with regard to the neighbor at 291 Hirschner Court, the development that she referred to behind her, the 16-town homes, I believe that was done in the city of San Jose, and that, that was not heard here in this planning commission. And that seems to be a rather dense development, and most likely, it was a planned development, and their setbacks were probably very minimal, and unfortunately, 291 Hirschner Court did not or could not say anything about that. What we have for our rear setback, the rear setback required here is 20 feet. The existing first floor is at 26 feet, and our proposed second floor is 42 feet away from the rear property line. So we think with, with respect to sound and end site and so forth, that it's quite a distance away. We've made the same effort with side setbacks. The neighbor immediately to the right were 12, 13 feet away from that property line. Their house is at an angle. There was mention, and this is 281, we have a, a solar study in the drawings that shows that would not be impacting their home by the location of our addition, so you can look at that in the set of drawings that you have. The, the window to the rear, to address the gentleman from 267 Howe's Court, so we did raise that to an eight, eight-by-two window. That could easily be raised up higher. It could be really clear-story windows. We'd be willing to make those individual windows instead of one large window. I, I think that, that it is fair to say, though, that replacing windows and changing window sizes does require a building permit. And with respect even to the landscaping, I think one of the photos that you saw from the neighbor directly behind it was a little misleading, because if you do look at the site plan, the, the gap that's between our junipers is very small, and it does look onto their patio door. But I would suggest that maybe we could, and I've done this in other towns with landscaping, enter into deed restrictions so that, you know, should those trees be removed, should those windows be changed, and the neighbors become aware of it, it is written into the deed of this property that they are not allowed to do that. So this is the gap from the backyard, so I think the photos that you saw were much closer from the other side of the fence. The, the presentation.
Okay, we, we, you've used up your three minutes. Let me see if the members of the commission have further questions of the applicant. Commissioner Birch.
Good evening. We most certainly appreciate all the revisions and the work that you've put into that, and the modifications that have been made in attempting to address the privacy. What I'm wondering in looking at the various revisions is if there was ever a plan put forth in modifying the single story, in modifying such as the family room to create an additional bedroom, in using the exterior trellis area, enclosing that for additional space, and utilizing what appears to be a decent amount of space on the first floor to accommodate a larger family rather than adding a second story. Were any drawings or revisions ever submitted with that approach?
No, no, you know, we, we looked at that as that, that living room area being very important in the house with the view out to the backyard and, and having that patio area and that courtyard so that any outdoor activities wouldn't be 20 feet from the back fence. We did talk about putting an addition in that area, Sarah and I did. However, that would, losing the family room, you know, we feel would, would just not be an appropriate location for a bedroom, for a master bedroom suite. Talked about adding behind that, that would enclose it, so not able to get light and air and, and meet any building code requirement. So as far as discussing that with planning staff, no, but we did have some discussions on our own. We felt that the two-story was the appropriate way to go, and that, and that it would be consistent with other two-story homes in the neighborhood.
One more question. I'm sure you're aware that included in our packet, that there was a petition that went through the neighborhood where many of the neighbors signed opposing the, the plan.
Yes.
Can you, I hope you are able to, can somebody tell me which of the four sets of drawings that you put together that petition is based on?
The second one.
Second, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
We, we were asked not to respond to them after that.
Commissioner Buzraw.
Thank you. What is the, what is the sill height on those, the windows in the master bedroom that look to the back and the one that looks to the side?
Okay, the, the, the eight-by-two window would have a sill height of a little bit less than 60 inches from the floor. That could be easily changed to get above 60 inches from the floor. The window that's on the left side, there's two windows, and in the presentation that, that one of our neighbors made, those windows were incorrectly shown. We have changed, changed those in more recent submittals so that the one window on the left side elevation is smaller. However, there is one window that is a little bit larger, and that's because it is our egressable window.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. We will close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the commission for additional questions of staff, comments, or a motion. Commissioner Birch.
I have a question I'm hoping you can help me with to remind me. What are the egress window code requirements? Is it one per bedroom, or can you put them both to the front in the front bedroom rather than have one in each bedroom?
I don't know the building code, probably even less than you may know the building code, but usually, it is one per room you have to have.
And, oh, sorry. And in reading Larry Cannon's comments, a lot of them seemed to elude back and forth between the second submittal and the third submittal, and I'm assuming the plans we have here we're calling the fourth submittal. Did he also review these and make comments? It, it was a little confusing to me in reading his comments if he was addressing this fourth submittal, or because they were similar enough to the second submittal?
His June 21st letter.
Right.
Is addressing the fourth submittal, and he has that listed in there.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to throw out some thoughts, because I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. One discussion or one point raised was, the neighborhood is the way the neighborhood is, and when people buy there, they, that's what they think they're buying. And the question was, if one were to put a two-story building here, isn't that a good argument for other people when they come in to put in a two-story, which changes the nature of, of the neighborhood? Over the years, we've seen that occur in Los Gatos and certain of our neighborhoods, which has totally changed the character of the neighborhood. So, so we have that question to deal with. But then, secondly, if one simply wants to say, well, we can mitigate this such that we could change the window heights or window sizes, or occlude the windows so you can't really see out, but light comes in, then that's a different issue. I, I think one could do that. But I'm, I would certainly appreciate some thoughts from my fellow commissioners on simply the question of if this, if we were to permit this larger-than allowable square footage and a second story. The, the square footage doesn't bother me as much as the second story, although I don't know how you get the square footage if you don't have the second story. But I do think if you do this, then the question is, how many more over a period of time in the neighborhood will go two stories when the neighborhood in fact was not designed for two stories? So if anybody has any thoughts they'd like to share on that, I'd like to hear them.
Okay. You know, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell in that hand-in-hand, that this, the extra square footage and the second story go hand-in-hand. And I'm actually on the side of, of hesitancy to go over the square footage. I think one of the commenters had made was that it's just a matter of fairness and equity. If you allow this home to go over square footage, what's to say the next home doesn't? And I understand that applicants, in the letter, you pointed out that there were two homes on the street that allowed square footage for them. I don't know the details of why those homes were allowed. You know, in, in each particular case, sometimes there's extenuating circumstances, but in this particular application, there's nothing that has been presented to me to justify extra square footage other than the desire for a family room, a living room, a certain amount of homes. And until I have that justification, especially with neighborhood concerns strongly opposed to it, I can't find the findings to allow the extra square footage without being inconsistent with upcoming and future applications. So those are my comments, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. Commissioner Talasfor.
Right. Well, I look at this as with probably four issues. And, you know, change happens in neighborhoods, and at some time, other homes in your neighborhoods may change as well. However, Los Gatos does have guidelines and policies that address that, and to be equitable, and that's what we're having to be here, we have to apply those policies. And in this case, although the views are not protected, we're not talking about views. We're really talking about just the fact that the square footage exceeds at an inappropriate level the Los Gatos policies in this case. So in my, when I look at this, the other challenge that this property has is in its architecture, because that is where the, it's a design challenge. And so I would have to probably disagree with our town architect on that, that I, if this were to go forward with a second story, that it could be solved, that it would be definitely up to you to solve that with some architecture solutions. And then the last thing that I, that was issued for me was that landscaping with trees in a neighborhood, especially what we see right, what's there now, those a neighborhood, especially what we see right, what's there now, those cypress trees, is a pretty strong statement of architecture. And then, to introduce another tree that I have no idea if the neighbor agreed to this or not, is a redwood tree, comes with its own problems as it grows. And I really would like you to take another look at that. I don't know how big that tree is now, but you may want to think about that. And I'm sorry that you didn't get consultation from maybe our town arbor, someone here at the town. So, those are my issues, and I probably would not be in favor of granting this request.
Commissioner Bouchard.
I'm going to take a slightly different perspective on this. This is before us for one reason only, and that is, it's exceeding the maximum-floor area ratio. And the evidence I've heard tonight has been 100% concerned about privacy of the second story. I mean, that's the predominant theme of why the neighbors are concerned. And so, I look to our findings and what the findings we have to make. So, to the person who said, you know, if you're going to grant this extra square footage, you have to do it to everyone, well, we have a set of findings that we have to make to be able to grant that extra square footage. And so, when I read them, I can make most of these findings. One of them also talks about compatibility, and I've, we have our town architect's assessment. I've actually had, we had testimony from the neighbor that said, yeah, the architecture was okay, kind of, you know, but then when we started talking, thinking about the privacy issues, that's where we got concerned. So, when I actually look at the language of what the finding is, the findings are that we need to make, the design theme, sense of scale, exterior materials, details of the proposed project are consistent with historic preservation overlay zones, specific plans, residential development standards, which I think I can make that finding, and the lot coverage setbacks and far the proposed project is compatible with the development on surrounding lots. That's where the question lies. And if you look at the FAR of what it would actually be, it is not the highest FAR in the neighborhood. It's the second, so, I mean, is that compatible with the surrounding lots? It might be. When I look at the letter of the law of what we're supposed to be doing, you know, they meet the setbacks, they're under the height requirement. To me, it becomes a privacy and a design issue of how do we, how do we address the neighbor's concerns over privacy and not so much the second floor? So, that's my perspective.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Yeah, just to follow up, and as I said, Commissioner Bouchard, it's a design challenge. So, I would agree with you in that point.
Commissioner Birch.
I'm going to have to agree with what Commissioner Sayak said, however, when we do look at individual properties, and we do have to look at them one at a time, there has to be a convincing argument, I believe, to exceed the limitations that the town has set forth. That's why they were put, why they were put down, and that's why we've been asked to sit here and to take a look at these and to follow them. And when I was asking about the first floor usage, you know, what I'm hearing is, you know, we want a family room, and we want a living room, and a dining room, and a nook. And I guess what I'm thinking is, sometimes you've got to give a little to get a little. And maybe some of that space down there could be modified and could be used in a new and a different way, where the second story could be smaller, then could reduce the setbacks of it to give the neighborhood the privacy they're asking, and we could hopefully meet everybody's needs. So, I have a hard time saying I'm willing to step past the boundaries the town has set when I'm looking at it thinking that perhaps there's a compromise in front of us. So, I probably would not be looking to support this at this time.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One of the things which would concern me, I agree, I don't, I, well, I won't go into who I agree with, it's neither here nor there. What I guess I'm concerned with is, we know that the square footage seems to be driving the second floor, but even if the square footage were not driving that, Commissioner Bouchard says, well, then we could make the findings fairly easily. I couldn't make the findings fairly easily. I don't think the character of the neighborhood allows for just adding second stories wherever you feel like it. I think the character of the neighborhood is set by the neighborhood. And if the argument is, you can add second stories whenever you want to, which seems to be the argument, I would not read the character of the neighborhood to permit that. I may be dead wrong on that, but when I think of the areas in town where that has occurred and the total character of that part of the town has changed, I feel very bad about that, and I would like to think that didn't have to happen. And what it happens for is, we're all empathetic with a family that needs more space. I am. But when I look at what it does to a neighborhood, and it's not like the people coming in didn't know what they were buying, they did. So, I think it would change the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, to have two stories here, and I particularly think that what you do is, it's, if that one goes in, then another one goes in, sure, eventually, the neighborhood will be a two-story neighborhood. And I don't think that's what it is, and I don't think that's what the neighbors anticipate. So, I guess you could look at this and say, it is, it is within the character of the neighborhood. One could say that. I would not. So, I would not, I would not be in favor of this project for two reasons. One is the square footage, but the second is the second story. I don't believe that that is consistent with the neighborhood. So, on those two bases, not just one, I would not support this project.
If we want to go home.
So, nice to be with you. I haven't had no hurry. All right, I would, I would make the motion that we deny the application on the basis that I cannot make the required findings. I don't believe the proposal, the second story proposal, is consistent with the neighborhood. And secondly, I've heard no support for the reason for exceeding the maximum allowable square footage. And on those two bases, my motion would be to deny the application.
We have a motion by Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Talasfor.
And I'll second that motion without comment.
So, I have a question for the maker of the motion, because I was headed down the same path as Commissioner Bouchard. So, it seems to me what's in front of us, so, I guess my question of the maker of the motion is upon, so, there's very clear direction about the basis upon which we could approve and therefore the reverse, not approve, exceeding the FAR. So, it's not, so, I would, so, that becomes a question of is, if there's one that exceeds the, exceeds the FAR that's in the neighborhood, with the question that Commissioner Bouchard, does this make it consistent with the neighborhood and provide a basis for granting another exception? So, I'd like to know the maker of the motion's perspective on that question. And then, you're also suggesting in your motion that you couldn't find that it would be compatible with the neighborhood or changing the character of the neighborhood. So, while that's interesting, how does that, upon what basis is that a basis for denying the application that's before us?
It says, requesting approval to construct a new second story for single-family residents and to exceed the maximum. I read that as conjunctive, two things, and I'm responding to both things. If you, for example, felt that you could support the exceeding, not exceeding the maximum, that would be fine, but I particularly would include in my motion two reasons. One is the second story not being in the character of the neighborhood, and that should be enough for architectural site approval denial. And but two, for those of you who don't agree with that, I also give you that I have heard no support for exceeding the maximum allowable FLRA, except that they'd like it. It would make, they just think it would be a nice idea. And I, I'm empathetic with that, but I don't think that, if that's all we take to exceed the maximum FLRA, why do we have the maximum FLRA? Everybody who asks for it wants it. And if that's, if that's the qualification, then there is no requirement.
Commissioner Talasfor.
And as far as exceeding, as far as the other homes in the neighborhood that may have exceeded the floor area ratio, we don't have any information as to when that was done. It could have been done years ago. It could have been done for reasons, compelling reasons that we don't have in front of us. So, I think it's a little hard to have to look at that without us knowing the whole story as to why those were approved.
I would just say, I'm accepting those homes as they are, and it's not really important to me how they got there. But in trying to characterize the neighborhood, I would characterize the neighborhood with those two-story homes. I would not try to avoid them. I still think another second, two-story home is still not consistent with the overall neighborhood or the definition of what the immediate neighborhood is. I think it's, the reason, well, let me just say this. I think that Commissioner Bouchard's point is, is very well-taken, but I would hope that we will not be forced to grant two-story homes wherever people want them under that philosophy. So, that's why I'm making this on two points, and I may indeed be wrong on that first point, but I feel more, much, well, I feel it's a very important point. But secondly, I do feel there is no, there are no facts in the record to justify exceeding the maximum FLRA, the allowable FLRA area. There's nothing in the record to support that. So, that's why it's dual. One is more, could be questionable, but I think it's important, and that's why I'm putting it in.
Other comments from the commission? If not, we'll call the question. So, we have a motion in front of us to deny the application in front of us by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Talasfor. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So, we have, it passes four to two with Commissioners Erickson and Bouchard voting against. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are. Anyone who is not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal the decision to the Town Council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. We'll move on to a report from the Director of Community Development.
Since we last met, the DRC has held three meetings. On July 30th, there was a lot line adjustment approved between two properties on Kennedy Road, which were 16170 and 16200 Kennedy Road. There was an architecture and site application for 381 Pennsylvania Avenue, requesting approval of a technical demolition of a pre-1941 home and a construction new home. A, one of the parcels in the Shady Lane subdivision was approved, DRC also, at 15657 Shady Lane. And then, we also had two parking lot permits, which are just building permits, but the town code requires building permits for parking lot reconfiguration other than just three ceiling to come before the DRC. So, one for the Silker Center was approved, and then one also for the former used Honda site. On August 6th, a grading permit was approved to construct additional parking out of Venture Christian Church on Hicks Avenue, 16845. And then, yesterday, we had two applications, 17390 High Street, which was a time extension for a previous approval. They haven't pulled their building permits yet. And the second was 17431 Wedgewood Avenue, which was the demolition of an existing home and construction of a new home. The council also met since our last meeting, and on August 5th, they held a study session to discuss regulating leaf blowers, and they provided some direction to staff at that study session, and that will be brought back at a later date. They also introduced the zoning ordinance that the Planning Commission recommended approval of for 234 and 236 Los Gatos Boulevard. And lastly, they adopted a revised story poll policy. And once that is finalized, we'll make sure that Planning Commission gets that.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Are there questions for him? Are there commission matters? If not, we're adjourned.